Welcome to Mound City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, February 11th. Can we do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Does anybody have any amendments?
There is one very small amendment to item eight. It's just a replacement of a brief typo in the now therefore be resolved portion of the resolution, which is in front of the five U right now.
Okay. We got the agenda with that amendment. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, you got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. Then we got our consent agenda. Does someone want to go through those?
I can do that. For A, approved payment of claims. B, approved minutes from the January 28th meeting. C, pay request number two and final in the amount of $2,358 to Pipe Services for Project 23-04. And D, pay request number two and final in the amount of $1,292.74, also to Pipe Services for Project 24-04.
All right, we got our consent agenda. Does anybody want to talk about those or pull one? All right, here none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
You got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany?
Here.
Councilmember Pugh?
Here.
Actually, can we go back one? Iron Knight, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye.
Thank you.
All that passes, so if you're here for that, that's all passed. All right, number five, we got comments and suggestions from anybody that's on the, that their item is not on the agenda. If you want to come up, take a couple minutes. Haven't seen you in a while. Give us your, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Holt, councilmembers, city staff, and Mr. Lansman. My name is Paula Larson. I live at 5713 Linwood Boulevard in Mound. Tonight, I am here to talk about my commercial building and property in downtown Mound that I have owned for almost 30 years. I'm here tonight to humbly request that the city of Mound consider letting me enter into a purchase agreement with the two city-owned lots, one being abutting the north side of my building and the other one abutting the south side of my building. That lot to the north, I'll call that Longprey Lot, was scraped by the city of Mound approximately 20 years ago, and it's been sitting there, not on our tax row, row, roll. And I think it is time to make that corner pretty again, and I happen to have the business experience to do just that and expand the current businesses in my building, which is the former Larson Printing, now Press Perfect, and we have the locksmith there. And I'd like to move another business into there that happens to be family-owned and to make that corner viable and pretty again. I would like the property to itself to secure the parking for my customers or my tenants and also make sure that the businesses across the street there will also have pretty close parking to support their businesses, too. That's it.
That's it? All right. Do you, I mean, do you have like a proposal or drawing or?
I had something drawn up. I do have a proposal that is, right now, currently about a year and a half old, that showed what I had in mind at that point about the expansion and what I wanted to do. I do have that. I did not bring that with me tonight. I know the city has it.
Right.
They've seen it twice, and I just think it's time we do something with that corner, beautify Mound. We want to be a pedestrian-friendly town. There's not even a bench there anymore.
Right.
And there's just no place to sit. I'm, my family business is capable of making that gorgeous.
And you would leave your current building alone or you would combine that with?
I'm going to say that I, right now, I'm going to say no.
Okay.
I'm going to say, to start off, depending on what happens here. I have many plans. My family has many plans, what we want to bring into there. But it depends on how much property the city of Mound is willing to let us buy.
Yeah.
It makes a difference in the size of the project we do there.
I think we have a process for developers coming before the city. I'm glad to see Ms. Larson here to-
Say that again, Sherri.
I said, you know, we have a process in which developers are to come and do a preliminary proposal, which you're somewhat doing now, but it's not quite as comprehensive.
Are you saying you have somebody that's come to you?
No, 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 no. But, you know, we have a process where you would-
That you helped us with.
Yeah, that I helped.
You helped, remember?
Yes.
Where the developer brings the proposal to us.
Yes.
You're bringing a proposal, but not quite to that preliminary level in which we would review, and then it would go to the planning commission and then come back to us. And in that process, as a council, we have to decide, we've sold the property once before at a price. Are we willing to maintain that price or are we going to go with what was the appraised price, too? Or you could make an offer as to what you want to pay us for, too. That can be part of your proposal.
I just want to make sure I understand. So are you suggesting that I come back to a council meeting and put myself on the agenda and present what we have in mind for that property there?
Yes.
And at that time, do you want to talk about price or is that afterwards? I mean, I need, my plan depends on how much property that the city is willing to, I'm going to call it a proposed purchase agreement, depending on what the final product is that I put there, that we put there.
I wouldn't think we'd talk about pricing, right? We'd just decide if it was like the proposal, the plan from Ms. Larson, and if it's something that we think is appealing, then the next step would be?
No, so she would submit a, an offer or a proposal to us, and then we would go in the back room and we'd decide, yes, we like that or not. We'd come back here, say, here's the, you know, our counter or whatever.
But before that, like a proposal of the idea?
Well, she would tell us that first, right?
That's what I would do.
And then she'd say, hey, by the way, I want to give you a blank amount for this land. And then it would all be a contingent on it going through planning and it, you know, doing the rest of the stuff, right?
Correct. And I understand that process.
Yeah, so it's no different than, I mean, you're here for it.
Okay.
It's than the last deal that was there.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking at the beginning, before we get into the nitty-gritty of the, bringing the additional business in for sure, possibly two. I just want to make sure that I understand that would the city, can you say tonight that you would be interested in entering into a purchase agreement to sell those two lots?
Would we be interested just in general?
I don't think we can say that because, one, we don't have anything in front of us that shows us the lots, okay? I mean, we visually know it, but I think we need to see the plotting of the lots and make sure that we understand the lots and-
So did we have a purchase agreement on those two lots prior?
The one.
So there's two back there.
The one in between Lost Lake, well, actually State Farm-
That parking lot here.
And her building.
Right.
The city owns that.
So we evidently are interested in talking about selling that property.
Are we interested? I'm absolutely interested.
Okay.
Absolutely. Let's talk.
Yeah.
Now, it comes down to the details, for sure.
That's what I want to hear. And like I said, I feel I have the experience.
Yeah.
I kind of have a feeling what needs to go there. I'm the one getting the phone calls, asking me, do you have space for this? Do you have space for that? We need to promote our business atmosphere, if this is my opinion, in that downtown area. We do have the property, the city has the property there. We need to move forward for the approximately last 20 years, that Longprey property, it, the city hasn't gotten a penny for that where they were getting it before. I just say, we need to move forward with our plans, and I think that I happen to be the one with the experience and had a feeling as to what needs to go in that spot. And we have the, I'll say, businesses that can complement what I'm, I'm talking about doing. So you would, am I hearing you would entertain a proposal?
Yeah.
So, so do I need to come back to you now? Tell me what the plan is. I need to come to you?
Yeah, let's, let's visit again.
You want to visit again?
Yeah. And then we'll put it together and help you get on the agenda.
Okay. So I will call and make an appointment to come in and visit with you and see what you guys have to say, and I'll be at this again now for the second time, so.
And then if your meeting goes well, we'll put you on the agenda.
Okay.
And then, you know, just like you've seen before, you'll come, come in front of us, basically just give us the general idea. It doesn't have to be exact. You don't have to architect draw it, right?
Yeah.
But just generally, this is what we're thinking, whatever. I mean, I would start with that first.
Okay.
But, I mean, if you want to actually do an offer at any time, I mean, we, anybody can give us an offer.
Yeah. Like I said, I've already brought that to the city. I think, Sherri, you've seen it twice, what I had, kind of my idea there, what the architect did. I don't want to go to, I want to make sure that you guys are, the council is on board for, I'm going to call it, the beautification of downtown Mound. We need to move forward.
I think the council and the whole city's ready, so.
We're ready. I'm ready. We need to move forward, and we need to make it pretty and make people wanting to be in our city along with some businesses.
Right.
So, nice to see you all again.
Yeah, nice seeing you.
Paula, can you repeat which two lots you're talking about?
I, so it would be what, it's the two lots that abut my building at 2316. So one I call the Longprey Lot, that's kind of in the shape of an L.
Just to the north.
And it goes to the corner.
Just to the north and just to the south.
The one to the south is currently city parking, and I'm going to leave it at that. But I think someone needs to come in there and take care of the parking lot. And I won't go there, but somebody needs to make that look nice again, too, and make sure that we have adequate parking for businesses across the street from my commercial building if they don't want to park in the back. And I think I have a plan for that, so. Anything else? Nice seeing you all.
Good to see you, Paula.
That's it. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, see you.
All right, does anybody else want to come up? All right, number six, we got Orno Police Department with January 2025 activity report. Welcome.
So the last checks we done, I talked to you two weeks ago. We haven't had much more activity, maybe 25 more calls added to our, our docket, but nothing's been really outside of the abnormal, handling things as they are. The police department-wise, we are now hiring another, in the process of hiring another officer. We had one resign, so now we are back at square one again, trying to reload our department. So other than that, there's, hasn't been a whole lot of activity. First snowfall was on Sa- one of the most significant snowfalls on Saturday. We didn't have real issues with parking. We got, kept the roads clear for the plows and got things handled for them. So at this point, we're, we're making our way through winter and we're getting ready for the stuff to start moving around, around once the weather gets a little nicer, so. You guys have any questions for me?
Yeah, does council have any questions?
Other than-
Sorry.
You know, I'm getting people complaining about the number of sirens going through. And when I looked at the police report, I thought, well, these calls don't warrant sirens, so is it the ambulance? We haven't had fires, so I don't think it's fire trucks.
Yeah, it could be a number. It could be one. It could be our neighboring agency going through our area, because they have there on the north side of us and around us, so that could be them.
Could we say something to them? I mean, like, what, two mornings in a row, there were four, four sirens before 11 o'clock in the morning.
Okay. It could be ambulance, too, and it could be fire. I'm not sure. I don't see a lot of the daytime activity, so it could be, again, though, the officers do have to abide by state statute on rolling through towns, if they're going through stoplights, stop signs, anything. There needs to be lights and sirens going at all times to make them aware of it. Nonetheless, we are responsible for ourselves in those squad cars going, driving in a hazardous manner to get to calls, so be aware that it might be they're trying to get somewhere quickly, and they have to use their lights and sirens.
Oh, I was just, clarification on the new, so you guys are, have one open position for an officer posted, or you're going to post?
We posted, we posted that position on Fri- Fri- last Friday.
Okay. You know when it, when it closes or when you guys interview?
The 28th of February, it will close. Currently, we have two applicants in right now, coming in, so hopefully we'll get a few more and get some, a good candidate base.
Was it a veteran resignation or a new hire?
Uh, no, it was a, it was a newer officer, so I just wanted to pursue a different career path, so. It happens. It's the way it is in the police right now, is people find better pay, better opportunity doing something they really wanted to do or something. I don't know, it's just, it's the way it is right now, and we're working our way through it. It's just the nature of law enforcement right now.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, number seven, we got Ben Brandt, City of Mound LMCD rep. Welcome, Ben.
Good evening. I have not been up here in a while, but wanted to come back and say hi and introduce myself to the new councilmember. Ben Brandt, your appointed LMCD Lake Mantaconka Conservation District Board Member. I've served on the, volunteered on the board for six years now and was recently appointed to a third term for another three years, so look forward to working with you and fulfilling and trying to carry out Mound's wishes on the lake, as well as the, the lake as a whole to help everyone enjoy it and enhance the experience we all want to have on the lake. So, a couple of things, just to cover new, newness for Lake Mantaconka Conservation District. This last year, we worked through some boat rental rules that will help license boat rental operations, and then part of that is that there'd be needing a license approval through the LMCD, as well as the city at their ports of launch. So likely impactful to the rental activity at Surfside Park and hopefully allow that to not frustrate as many people, I think, so, without totally hindering the, the business operations unfairly there. So that's one, starting this, this new boating season in 2025. Second one, we worked through some code updates to streamline the watercraft for hire licenses, and basically what that does is it makes a uniform code for any watercraft that are for hire and carrying more than six people on them for various hired activities. And that will also go through an application process, and then there'll be a sticker that they get that will be on the, the side of their watercraft that says this is an approved watercraft for hire, watercraft. And the main goal that we are trying to do is level the playing field so that the commercial operators such as Alan Alma is, is just as fairly regulated as anyone else taking a pontoon full of people out, and primarily from a safety standpoint. So there's a lot of different things that those commercial operating watercraft go through from a, a safety of the boat, safety of the, the passengers, from the required personal flotation devices, and a lot of people are kind of flying under the radar of that, so we want to just make it uniform, singular code that they all abide boy, abide by, and then allow the water patrol to, to enforce it fairly and consistently. So those two were code changes coming up for this next year, and then we're always focused on safety on the lake, and we are helping fund dedicated water patrol deputies for Lake Mantaconka to complement Hennepin County's efforts on the lake. So we've had a good, we had a good track record of safety this past boating season and hope to continue that going forward. And then more local to Mound is that the, our staff has worked with a couple of different local projects, one being Harrison's Bay Association. They're making a, a couple of different efforts to help improve their impaired water in that, in those bays of West Arm Jennings and Harrison's Bay. Currently, I'm working with, with a couple of the, the association members to combat carp population. That is, they, they did a study over the last two years where it showed that the mass or population of carp in those two bays is, is beyond a, a normal level, and it's deteriorating the, the water quality, water clarity, native plant species, native plant, native fish species as well. So looking at some options to combat the invasive carp population there, one that would potentially happen this spring is bowfishing. It is currently not allowed in our code, but we're looking at options to do a special event permit that would allow, potentially, if this, if this does go through, but would allow a short season of, of carp fishing by, by bow and arrow to happen between like April and early June when their spawning season is. So nothing is set yet, but we're just looking at it behind the scenes at this point before anything official would, would come out to the public or, or into a kind of permitting, approval decision. And then the second one is our staff has worked with the, the developers on the Mantaconka Flats project to get the dock situated correctly so that it's viable for their development along commerce there, as well as fits the envelope of our dock use area, as well as the natural elements there that the DNR would, would be concerned about as far as the cattails and protected wetlands. So a couple of updates from me. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have or-
Does council have any questions for Ben?
Yeah, is there a place boaters can access the new code changes?
Yeah, they're all on our, our website.
Will it be indicated that these are the new code changes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
LMCD.org.
Thank you.
Do you, you know, the, the group's trying to come up with the lid, lake improvement. Have you heard about that?
I haven't heard a lot of details. Which group?
Harrison Bay.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm familiar vaguely with the lid process and how it's framed out.
Do you know, like, once the lid is set up, can, and the organization's kind of running it per se, can they control, like, you know, who uses a wake boat in that bay or, do you know anything about that at all?
No, my, my understanding of a lid, it's a lake improvement district, and it's, the main benefit is that it's a, a tax levy.
Right.
So that the, the property owners in that lake improvement district or the, along those bays that would be part of it would all be taxed at a cer- certain rate to fund various projects such as herbicide treatments for weeds in that bay, carp projects, stuff that would help the bays improve. But as far as regulating what types of boats or when people would be able to operate boats in their bays, that would be outside of any scope of a lid.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
That would fall under Lake Mantaconka Conservation District Code of Ordinances.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And you guys actually pushed the wake boat number out a little bit?
The, the number of-
Like how far you have to be from the shore?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's for all wake-producing watercraft. It's, it's now out to, to 300 feet from shore.
Right.
It was previously at 150.
Okay.
So, in normal water level conditions. Obviously, there's high-water declarations where we push it out to 600 feet or make it the whole wake, no, no wake zones if that's type of high-level water situations arose.
This is our chance, so he's our voice for this group here, so if anybody wants to say what we think about, what he should be bringing back on our behalf.
No, I guess maybe, this would be like Harrison Bay, too, but just some more frequent update on how the lid process is going or not going, you know? So I guess that'd be more Jesse, probably.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe, I don't know.
So what, what other questions would you ask us on, like, what, what we would want to see with your role and how you can represent us?
We, as a organization, have tried to define our lanes and stay in them. There was a clarification to the jurisdiction of the LMCD versus the cities that went into, clarified in law probably three or four years ago, maybe even four or five years ago now, but it basically said that our jurisdiction started and stopped at the ordinary high-water mark of the lake, and anything above that was city or municipality ownership or jurisdiction, anything over the lake was, was ours. So like a lid being formed by the Harrison's Bay Association would have, we would have no input on it since it's property rights rather than lake rights or lake ordinances. Our, our main focus is then our safety on the lake and making sure that we have the right code and the right enforcement so that the, the water patrol can do their job and do it with relative ease and consistency. Part of that is we, we help fund dedicated officers, so the way it works now is Hennepin County is in control of where they place their water patrol deputies, and if there's a need or emergency on a different lake, they would potentially be pulling deputies off of Mantaconka to respond to or to staff different lakes. We felt like there shouldn't ever be a time, especially in the summer, where that water patrol isn't present on the lake for, in need for code enforcement, but more so for an emergency response situation. So we are contributing, I think it's close to $70,000 to fund a dedicated water patrol officer at all times this coming season. We've done it thus far out of, say, the lake donations, but we may be looking at ways to be more sustainable with that funding going forward, and it might be some kind of like a le- small levy increase or something to help make sure that the cities are helping contribute to that deficit or shortfall in the staffing situation from the Hennepin County level. Beyond that, a lot of what we do and our staff does is code enforcement, dock applications, complaints, and, and hopefully there's some neighborly resolution to that, but if there's, if there's not our staff, we have three, three staff members and an interim executive director that's part-time, they will, they will take a lot of, we get a lot of complaints in the summer, especially about lot lines and site lines and docks and exec, you know, if they're off by a foot one or another, we can, we usually get those complaints, so our staff does a lot of follow-up on those to try and resolve them peacefully at first, but then through written warnings, legal warnings, citations, that stuff, so. And beyond that, we just want everyone to enjoy the lake fairly, consistently, and equally, so.
Any issues with these ice houses going, or the guys' cars going through the lake? Have you heard about that?
Uh, yeah, there's been a lot of them this year, actually. You know, and I, I know our, our organization's put out reminders, I know the state DNR puts out our reminders, but I think just to remind people, like, a lot of them happen around the channels, and that's the, the place on the lake that the ice is never safe to, to travel across, so I think that's where we've seen a lot of the cars go in, and I know there's a snowmobile that went in, but thankfully, they've all been pulled out and no one's been caught in the vehicle underwater, but, yeah, stay away from the channels.
Yeah, pressure ridges.
In your vehicles, so. And, and, yeah, and the pressure ridges are more, more common this year, and I think a lot of people are just excited to be back on the ice after not having a chance to have ice houses or vehicles out there last winter with, with how thin the ice was all winter, so it's a tough reminder for, for some people that be safe.
Does council have any other questions? All right, well, thanks for coming out and congrats on your three-year appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, number eight, we got discussion and action on resolution approving voluntary abatement agreement for a property at 1583 Dove Lane.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in front of you is an abatement agreement, a voluntary abatement agreement for 1583 Dove Lane. There's a series of events laid out in the staff- Uh, there's a series of events laid out in the staff memo, but basically early in the year. City staff, along with county staff, ornual police and building inspector were on-site voluntarily. The building inspector determined that the building was in a hazardous condition and the county made some findings as well. So staff, along with Mr. Landsman, started that process to put together this instrument. In the time as that took place, there was a purchase agreement for the house that was entered into and therefore we've added the purchaser to the purchase agreement. But the, the gist of it is we have a hazardous condition and we have a voluntary abatement agreement, which is sort of the best case scenario for the city and the, and the property owner. For the city's side of things, it gives us some tools to be able to enforce in case the, the hazardous condition isn't abated. And for the property owner, it get, it sort of keeps us off of their back versus some other more forceful ways like through the courts. So staff feels it's pretty straightforward. We wanted to bring it in front of you on the regular agenda just because there's a little wrinkle with it being purchased in the middle of it in case anybody had any questions. But the, the resolutions on page 328, I can answer some questions. Otherwise, our building inspectors here, I believe the property owner and the purchaser are here, but, and of course, Mr. Landsman, if you have questions about the agreement itself.
All right, does council have any questions for Jesse? Okay. All right, so I got a resolution on page 328 if someone wants to make that.
I think that requires amendment to the document that we have in front of us.
Yeah. Say that again?
I said, yeah, what, what he's talking about this, on page 329, there was an issue with the document, needs to be amended.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Before we approve the resolution.
Sure.
Well, I mean, you...
You just got to say that in.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to rewrite it right now.
No, but all you can, all you can say is just a motion to approve and consider the resolution with the change on page 329. I'll go through that part, but we can, it had to be part of the motion.
And that's separate from the voluntary abatement agreement, correct?
Nope, the voluntary, the voluntary abatement agreement is an exhibit to the resolution. So the resolution is the document that is there for approval of that agreement.
Okay, and I do have a question.
Do you want to do it?
Want to ask the question or no? I have a question concerning the agreement, yes.
Okay, go ahead and ask.
Um, I spoke with Jesse this afternoon about this and I understand why this is important. Um, I understand the benefits to the city. Uh, I am still however concerned about the timeframe allotted here for Ms., what's her last name, sorry?
Roxbury.
Roxbury. To get this cleaned up and there's an awful lot of requirements here.
She's here, do you honor to come up and you can ask it to her?
I definitely would be able to.
Okay, do you want to come up? All right, give us your name and address.
Stacy Roxbury, 1551 Canary Lane, Mound.
Do you want to address her?
Yes.
Do you think you'll get it done in time?
I am the one who actually proposed all of those timeframes.
Okay.
So it wasn't something that the city came to me with. I had spoken to Tracy before that to see what he was looking for.
Okay.
And I have everything lined up to the point that I know I can perform on them.
Okay, so, um, do we have an idea of what this is going to cost? Because I'm concerned if the city ends up having to take over the abatement, I'm concerned that that's taxpayer dollars that would need to be spent, which is why I'm concerned about the time commitment. Um, I think we've had track records that have occurred in the past where things have not been completed as rapidly as a lot of people in the community would like to see When we say that you're going to have this done by April 15th, I would expect that we wouldn't get any extensions requested, is that what you expect?
Correct, not from my, yes, correct.
Okay.
I know we have a dumpster being delivered there later this week, I think Monday at the very latest. Uh, road restrictions normally go on at the beginning of March.
Right.
I'm hoping to get at least a 30-yard dumpster out before then with a fresh 30-yard coming in before road restrictions. Additionally, I have my roofer and my contractor who's making their material lists to get at least the roof and the deck and the siding and the windows delivered prior to road restrictions, even though we haven't closed on it yet.
So it is salvageable, it's not a question of a...
Correct.
Just mowing it down and getting it out.
It's a 7080s built, it sustains some water damage. Um, I've spoken with my structural con engineer and the contractor about it, being that it's a newer built house. If anything, you're just going to have to reinforce or replace what's there.
Okay.
It's not like you're going into a 1920s house.
Sure.
That wasn't really properly built the way it should have been to start with. So from my perspective, it's more of a straightforward project. And I know Tracy can also let you know that right now, most of the structure is open so you can see the structural members.
Right, no, I saw that from the photographs, I understand that it, it looked pretty good.
So it's almost easier at that point, so to speak, because you're not going to tear walls open and not know what's behind there.
Okay.
We're also planning on starting over on electric plumbing, heating, everything.
Okay, and you're prepared to obviously make those permits, request those permits?
Correct.
Apply for those, I mean, okay. All right. Okay, as long as that's what's going to happen here, I'm okay with it.
I also live in the neighborhood, so I would like it fixed as quickly as possible.
Right, I did look that up, yeah, you, like a block away almost.
Or at least, you know, the outside, so.
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for her?
Uh, maybe a point of clarification for council member Eric's comment about, you know, taxpayer money being spent on anything and Mr. Landsman can correct me if I'm wrong, but if something wasn't done correctly or on time, or if there was a cost to the city, it would just be assessed to the property and there would be no cost to the, to us?
Yeah.
In the long term, correct. In the short run, we would have to foot the bill for it.
Correct, with regard to the cost with, for any abatement, but I'm glad the city are correct, it would be a city cost, but we have the right, the ability and the authority under this agreement to assess, and I can't, I can't remember offhand, but there's, there's a set interest rate under the statute.
Mm-hmm.
And there's also, it's, I want to say five years, but I have some reason the number eight is in my mind, but it's a short term, it's a, there's a term of the assessment and it's a maximum amount of the term that we can do, we can do one year if you wanted to.
Right, well, I just know that a lot of the neighbors are very concerned about this and, you know, I don't want this to turn into a six-month, three-year, whatever project, you know, if we can get it to resolved in the 15 days, I think that's great.
And...
I mean, that looks like it closes on the 31st of March, is that correct?
31st of March.
Other before, okay.
So, yeah, I, I want to put out there too that the alternatives are without Ms. Roxbury doing the work.
Right.
Would be to enter into a voluntary...
Abatement.
Abatement.
Sure.
And this is, and, and the city doing the work. So this is kind of a, let's give them, you know, it's, they presented a, a plan to get it done and the, the push always for code enforcement is voluntary compliance. This is what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
Now, on the other end, if, if there's a contest of it, we've lived, we've been through that with Commerce Boulevard and we know that it can take, it could take, in that case, years, you know, for it to come to conclusion, so.
And you're talking about if we didn't do this?
If we didn't, if we didn't do this and there wasn't voluntary, anything voluntary at all, um, there is a process involved and just like any other, if a court case, if there is contest with it, that possibility, it can be drawn out.
Right.
Um, so this, this was...
It's a nice solution, I agree.
Yeah.
I just, I want to make sure the commitment's there and that, that was, I'm glad you're here because I wanted to better understand if this 15 days was realistic. I mean, I've been involved in this kind of work and your best laid plans don't always come true. Now, to your point, the walls are open and believe me, you start opening walls and you find all kinds of crazy things. So, I mean, that's why I'm asking the question. I don't, you know, I think the agreement stands, you know, I'm not a lawyer, that's your job. So, um, but yeah, I just want to make sure that the taxpayers are protected here and that the timeframe is realistic and that we can stay within reason and not coming back for repeated extensions and extensions, which would happen with a different property.
Right.
So I'm just trying to make sure we're locking that in, that we're not going to address this again in six months.
Well, the timeframe itself was...
She said she did it.
Right, I mean, you, I mean, and, and worked through with, with the city and Ms. Roxbury came up with, with the timeframe. And so I consider that to be...
Okay.
A business terms.
Right.
And then the rest of it is the enforcement ability for the city and the ability to recoup its costs are there.
Okay, all right. Do you have any other input? Just one, ask those questions.
Anybody else have any questions for, okay. All right, any other discussion between council? All right, so we got a motion, or sorry, a resolution on page 328. Someone wants to make a motion.
Um, I'm sorry, did you say 328?
Yeah.
No, it's not 328.
It's not, um...
Is that?
The resolution's on 328 and then the...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
The other one's on 332.
Do you all have that page?
No.
You should have a resolution in there.
I got it.
But it was in, but it needed to be amended.
The 328 looks different.
Yeah.
Looks like yours.
But, um, you know what, maybe, I bet you that was the older agenda.
If someone can read that, that's, that's where it is.
I'm looking at page one of the...
Yeah, that's, it's just, it's just resolution approving the voluntary abatement.
Okay, all right, I can do that.
And then once you do a motion to approve, and then I'll add in the last part.
Okay, just cut me off when you're ready.
Um, I would like to make a motion for a resolution approving voluntary abatement agreement with respect to the hazardous property existing at 1583 Dove Lane in Mound, Minnesota.
With the amendment to the resolution as noted in the memorandum from the community development director dated February 11th, 2025.
Yeah, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that passes. Congrats. All right, so number nine, we're going to approve a study in authorized preparation of plans and specifications for 2025 street improvements.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Matt Bowman, city engineer. It has been a while since we've done a street reconstruction project, so I'll kind of walk you through the steps here. We got feasibility study completed for the 2025 area, also, and then the... What happened there? It went backwards, I think. Bear with me for a second.
Sarah, can you hit that door? Thanks.
There we go. So we refer to this area as the 2003 area, so a little over 20 years ago, the city embarked on a 10-year reconstruction program that drug out a little bit, it ended up being closer to 15 years, so we wrapped that up in 2019. And so now we are at the next stage to start redoing that, those initial roads. Um, so in the upper right-hand corner here, that's our project area, I'll zoom in a little bit closer in the next few slides. So that's, that's the area we're looking at and that was the initial reconstruction, they called it back then, digging back into those plans, they didn't actually rebuild the full roadway, they just kind of skimmed the surface and, and cleaned it up that way. They did clean up the curb and gutter. Um, so our project proposes to rebuild the full pavement section so that is, ends up being three and a half inches of asphalt, eight inches of aggregate, and then we add in a layer of geotexile fabrics. That keeps the, kind of the clay material, which is very common in Mound, from migrating up through the aggregate and causing more of the, the potholes and stuff I'll show, or not necessarily the potholes here, but the, the alligatoring and the defects to the pavement. And you'll see, I'm going to repeat a lot of this stuff between the next few studies, so this figure here is, kind of goes through the pavement cycle, the responsible pavement management. So our, our road here is kind of in the, the blue and so we're looking to reset the clock so we can get back to here and so we can get it back into a mill and overlay cycle and extend that out for about 60 years. The other pieces of the project, we're going to replace any defective curb, with curb, curb and gutter, which is fairly minor on this, in this area. Minor utility improvements, so that's generally going to be storm sewer castings, kind of help us fight the inflow and infiltration issues with dealing with Met Council and trying to keep the clean water out on the street and making its way to the lake instead of getting to the sanitary sewer, and then some stormwater quality improvements because of the, the size of our project, we'll have to do some treatment. So the big, kind of a bigger overview picture here, Gull Lane here in Glen Allen. Um, the yellow arrow indicates that, I mentioned back when we came in October, that Shorewood was the originally planned road, but Rest Haven is in worse shape and so we pivoted, pivoted to pick up Rest Haven here while, while we're in the area and then we'll do Shorewood in a few years. Um, and then talking with Public Works guys, the, the parking lot down here off of Red Road for the Three Points Park is also in pretty bad shape, so we'd like to get that while we're nearby. Uh, a little bit closer, closer up, zoom, I'll just point out, so this is a city-owned lot here on the corner of Enchanted and Paradise. So that's really our only opportunity to do stormwater quality improvements and so to meet Minnehawke Creek Watershed District requirements, that's where we're going to aim to make those happen. We probably won't hit the full reach of the goal, so we'll have to workshop with them a little bit where, where we trade some of that work. Uh, and then I'll just walk through a couple of pictures here, so just talk about the, so alligatoring, so you can see like the, the multiple layers of cracks that are coming through there. So that's where we can start to see that the, the subgrade of the pavement is starting to deteriorate and that's why we want to go all the way down instead of just doing a mill and overlay and kind of cleaning up the top. And that was on Glen Allen. Rest Haven here, you can see kind of on the right-hand side, there's, there's a lot of settlement up here, this is kind of, this has been a problem spot for many, many years. And then you can't see it great, here I'll zoom in a little bit through some more alligator cracking over there. Uh, so that's, that other piece of Rest Haven there, another side of Paradise Lane, just kind of walking through the, the streets in, in their current state. So with all of that, but we come up with a total estimated project cost of a little over a million dollars. Fifty thousand of that is related to the sanitary sewer casting replacements and then the rest is the streets and storm sewer and a little bit of curb and gutter. Our proposed schedule is up there now, so in October we came with the authorization to do the study, right now we'd receive the study and authorize final design. We should be ready to go for bids in April, open an award in May, and then construction would occur this summer. My, I'd anticipate this would be about a one month, maybe two month project, it should go pretty fast. As far as reconstruction projects, it's relative term here, it should be clean because we're, we're generally leaving all the curb, there's not very many utilities in this area, so it's really just going to be take, take the street section out, put it back in and, and get out of the way.
Not a question on that?
Yep.
Um, you said like the curbs are pretty clean, but part of this project was also to like spot check where it's needed repaired?
Yes, yep.
But you're anticipating it's just not a lot of it?
Yeah, that, it looks like it's all in pretty good shape, so we're going with 10 to 15 percent I think will have to come out, so a pretty small amount. And that's really just going to be fixing sags and, and cracked curb and stuff like that. And then accommodate some of the storm sewer. I think that is my last slide here, so the next steps would be requesting council action, give a resolution, a few pages later the miss to accept the study and authorize final design for PW 2501.
I just have a question, why does it say May of '26 final completion?
So I put that in there, that's going to be kind of contingent on when they wrap up and then getting all the turf and stuff completed and then getting through punch list. So it'll, it'll basically be done this fall, but there'll still be a little bit of cleanup work in the, in the fall.
Some landscaping in the spring.
In the ensuing spring, yep.
All right, we, we got a...
So the city, may I ask a question? The city amount is responsible for the total of $1,031, right? Or is there part of this sanitary sewer thing that Met Council or somebody is taking care of?
So, yeah, I can jump in there, so...
I guess you should be looking at you.
We, so the sanitary sewer pieces are, we will use those costs to offset some of the Met Council surcharge and so there's an annual...
Okay.
...surcharge that they levy against us, we can, we can offset so many dollars, it's not, it's not always one to one, it's like fifty, yeah.
So we pay for it, we want credit for it.
Surcharge that they levy against us, we can, we can offset so many dollars, it's not, it's not always one to one, it's like fifty, yeah, half, half a dollar to a dollar for what we spend. And so, while we're there, castings are typically one of the, the items that we chase with other projects, so the castings, chimney seals, we'll do those while we're there, and those are. Dollars that'll offset the Met Council's surcharge.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And so funding, this is all accounted for in the long-term financial plan, no one's got it scheduled in there, so.
Mm-hmm, that was my last comment, it's all in our long-term financial plan.
Yes.
Capital improvement plan.
Alright, page three eighty, if someone wants to make a resolution. Motion.
Um, so I, I can do that again, but I think I've got, again, I'm on a different set of pages here, so I've got a resolution on page three ninety-one.
That might be the next study.
Yeah.
Three eighty is a engineer's estimate for me.
I've got three eighty, this came off the website.
Can you zoom in on it and I'll read it?
Try.
It's on three ninety-one in your packet.
That's what I thought it was, yeah.
There was an amended agenda after that one came out.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I just want to make sure it was, we don't have two, there's just one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the right one, it's three eighty.
Yeah.
You got three eighty.
Yeah. It came out shortly after, because there were some pages missing.
Okay.
But it's the same resolution, so.
Yes, I didn't.
I'll get after it here. Okay, I would like to make a motion, um, I have one question I want to ask you after this, too. Uh, I would like to make a motion for a resolution receiving report and authorizing prep for plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids. For the twenty twenty-five Millen Overlay Project.
Street Improvement Project.
Are you reading the wrong one?
Yeah, Street Improvement Project.
You are reading the wrong one.
There's two of them, yeah.
That's the next one we're doing after that.
I won't read.
Just read from there if you can read it. Can you see it or not?
I don't have that one.
Basically what you said, it's just the last part.
Yeah, same thing, just.
Same thing, but for the twenty twenty-five Streets Improvement Project, not the Millen Overlay Project.
Yep.
Correct. Okay, we got his motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, alright, that passes. Alright, number ten, we got approved study and authorized preparation of plans and specifications for twenty twenty-five Millen Overlay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and members of the council, Matt Bowman, City Engineer, so, I kind of did this on purpose, these two are, are coming to you together, the Millen Overlay Project and the Streets Improvement Project. Because there's a lot of similarity and overlap, and, um, our goal would be to bid them together as one project, but it'll make it a lot easier for managing contractor. And the impacts, but they are tracked as two separate projects as far as the city is concerned, so this is twenty-five zero-two. Um, so again, you see the same CIP maps, but now we're down on the west side of the city here, so we get the pink dashed area, that's the Millen Overlay area. Those streets were fairly new around the early two thousand, so they weren't in the original reconstruction program. Um, so, so that's why they fall in here, and that, and so we're actually right about here, we're maybe a little bit closer down to the bottom of the blue. If you're looking at the chart there. Uh, but again, this will, this is going to renew the pavement surface, it'll extend the useful life another twenty years. Um, but similar to spot, um, we're going to do spot curb replacements, sidewalk replacements, just to clean up the defective areas. A few full-depth patches, but it should be fairly minimal, and then we'll upgrade the pedestrian ramps. That's the, the gist of this project, it's a little bit, it's simpler and cleaner. And again, P, this one does not, it only removes, you know, about an inch and a half of the asphalt surface for the majority of the area, so residents are going to be able to, to go about their daily lives much, much easier. Uh, the map here kind of shows where there is existing sidewalks, that, that, we again estimate about ten, fifteen percent of that is going to need some cleanup just from settlements and. Movement over the years, um, similar with the, the curb and gutter. I put this picture in there, so this is fairly representative of Sugar Mill, so you, you can see you've got one transverse crack going across the road there, and then over here is a storm sewer and. A little bit of a sag, uh, in the curb line, so that's the simple stuff we're going to be looking at cleaning up, and then just redo the pavement surface. Over to the east, like South U Court, Langdon Trail, or Langdon, over there, that, that's been touched up a little bit more a few years with, um. I think that was last year, some of those patches were last year, right Ryan? So, we'll clean that up, some of, this area is probably going to need a little bit more of the patching, the full-depth patching, but then we'll, we'll mill and overlay it as well. So the cost of this area altogether is estimated at five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, again, accounted for in the long-term financial plan. And. I use the same schedule as the other projects, so that, um, planning to bid them together. So the next steps for you guys would be, again, to opt, um, to accept the study and then authorize final design for project PW twenty-five oh-two.
Alright, does council have any questions for this one? Alright, so on my page three ninety-six. We have that, or if you want to zoom in a lot?
Yep.
Someone could read that maybe. Someone wants to make a motion for that?
How do we have different pages?
I'll read it again.
I'm using my computer, so.
Oh, that's why, yeah.
Could be different. Yeah, I can't mess it up again, so. No, I said that out loud. Um, I'd like to make a motion, a motion for a resolution receiving report and authorizing prep for plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids. For the twenty twenty-five Millen Overlay Project.
Alright, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, alright, that passes. Alright. Hey, one question quick.
I have a question, too.
On your main page, the agenda. You see, like the one we just did, is it in bold letters, the three ninety-six?
No.
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 So.
I got the, I got the brand fresh new agenda, I guess.
Yeah, mine's three ninety-six.
There is just, there is a paper version, which is with McInnany and Castellano got the, you know, that was the, I couldn't physically. You know, change it, basically.
Okay, because I'm using the one you emailed.
It's the same resolution, it's the same information, so.
Just different page numbers.
Yeah.
That's completely confusing, when you're talking page numbers.
I mean, I got the same agenda, it's just the page numbers are different.
Right, right.
The, the official agenda, just so you know, for the meeting, is the one that the mayor is, has, and I have, well, the ones that's online, right now.
Can we possibly request a new agenda when we have edits like this at the last minute prior to the meeting, within reason?
I think you sent out an updated link.
To us, and then any changes, or substantial changes to the documentation as well?
Kevin did send an updated link to all of us, I, I didn't reprint it.
I didn't.
So I have the vintage.
For those that are printed, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I use the webpage, so that's what.
I mean, if he, if he, if he gives you an updated one of this.
Mm-hmm.
It, it still won't talk to your pages that you printed out. Right?
No, because I got the one off the, off the web.
Well, you give me this today.
Yeah, it was updated, yeah.
And then I'm, I'm working on the email that matches this, exactly. The other option, which I wanted to do for years, is everybody switched to electronic and reduced like a thousand trees, so. I used to get stacks and stacks and stacks, I had, after my first, what, year, two years, whatever, I had a stack of like this in my house. And I finally had to shred them all, because I'm like, oh my god, this is insane.
Well, I have everything filed, and I refer back to it often, I mean, I still like tactile.
Yeah, but I can look at the email that we just had, and it's all there, so.
Because if you get the online, there's like a library, and so you can go back to old copies in the library.
Hopefully that'll function better than it has in the past.
I don't want to force people to do it, I'm just, I did it myself, so.
And like, I can't see anything that's on the wall, it's totally unreadable for me.
Yeah.
I have a streets question for Matt.
Sure.
Just anticipating, maybe some emails or questions later this summer, like the, the, back to the Three Points one, where it's kind of. A lot of people's yards are fully, you know, like blocked off, and for people that maybe aren't paying attention as much as others, do we have a process of notifying residents and?
Yeah, so pending, you know, um, what happened tonight, we are actually going to send a letter out, um, the next day or two, to. Um, residents of both areas, just to let them know we're working on final design, they can reach out to us if they have any questions, that we'll send them these maps as well, so they, they're sure which streets we're working on, and.
So nobody should be surprised?
They should not be, not by the time the, the bat goes good there.
Got it.
Alright, number one, uh, sorry, number eleven, we got authorized preparation in plans and specifications for lead service line replacement project.
When you send that letter out, can we provide a link to the homeowner for this information? Unless you plan on putting all this into a letter, which I.
No, it'll, it'll be simpler, kind of show them the area, but yeah, we can.
For more information, kind of.
Uh, alright, so again, under the next item here, so lead service line, um, replacement project authorization. So, I think most of you remember getting letters in the mail last year, and then, um, bugged by city staff to get into your. Homes or, or complete the inventory of the information last year. So, from that, the staff gathered, I think thirty-two, thirty-two hundred inventories. If, a little over fifty of those came back on the customer side of lead, with lead or galvanized services. And so, from the Department of Health guidance, um, Minnesota Department of Health and EPA, the guidance is if you have a lead service line, obviously we want that replaced. They also want galvanized service lines replaced, because they consider any, anything that's galvanized, if it was ever downstream of lead, so it, depending on the, the age of the home, it could have been downstream of lead. It still has some of those same impacts, and so. They, they're pushing to get all of that replaced, um, and so, there's grant funds out there that we applied for pretty late in the game last season, and we actually, we got. Uh, onto part B for that, so we're, we're in line to get those grant funds to chase down getting the, all of these. Private property pieces, um, replaced, and so that's not something the city would normally do, but the residents themselves can't directly. Go after the, the grant fund, um, they, the city has to administer it, and so the, the way it'll work is, we'll put a contract together, we'll. We'll, um, get buy-in from each of the homeowners that needs the, the work done, and they'll, they'll agree to it, we'll go for bid, and they'll get that work done. Then the state will reimburse the city in, kind of a roundabout way of, of getting the lead service lines out of there. Um, in a cleaner way for, for all the administration to track. There are some cities that have a pool, and, and I can't talk overly intelligently about this, because I don't know a lot about it, but they, they've set up pools, and so. Like, and this is Minneapolis and St. Paul and Duluth, they've got a lot more staff, a lot more manpower to figure out to, to get, to go after that funding for Mound, which has about fifty out of the. I think it said thirty-two hundred that they got through, this is going to be the, the cleanest way to go about it. I can jump down here on the last page of the, what we submitted there, this kind of shows how sporadic. The lead service lines are, it's basically. Yeah, sorry, you can't really see in there, but the, the red and the yellow, they're, they're pretty spread out, it's basically two or three in a neighborhood. A little bit more up here, here in the Dutch Lake area.
Is this usually tied to the age of the home, or is it, like, certain periods when they?
Yeah, the, anything after nineteen eighty-five does not, we, we can just wipe those right off the board that they did not have lead service lines, but anything. Older than that, which a lot of the, the town is, that, that we had to get in and can try to confirm what it, what it is, there's still eight hundred roughly that haven't. Complied, they haven't completed the inventory, so there, there's more work to be done to track those down, but these are the ones that cooperated, and we, we have an opportunity to go. Go after and get those done, and then get the, reimbursed through the state for the work.
And have you already let those homeowners know that?
We have not, they've kind of reached out individually, let, um, wondering what the next steps were, and so. What, with, with your authorization, we will get, get ahold of them, we'll have Kevin open house, explain the process, and then get them to. Agree or, or not agree, and the ones that, that don't go along with it, they'll have to get placed on future lists. It's, we can, we can keep submitting to the Department of Health every year for these grants, but it, I feel it's going to get a little bit more competitive as other cities kind of get ready and get ramped up. As they're getting through their inventories, so we had some things going for us with the, the other clean water issues we're dealing with in town as well, so.
So, is this application, says revol, or drinking water revolving fund application, is that an application for money that's already been provided by a grant, or is that applying for a grant?
This is the application, it, yeah, so what you have, this is the appendix here, that is the application we submitted, and so they let us know that we're on part B, so we're. We're in line to get the funding, we just, we need to get plans submitted and to get them certified, so that's the schedule.
Okay.
Earlier here. Justin's easier when you do this. Alright, so yeah, let me talk through the schedule real quick, so, by the end of the month, or by the end of March, we will submit, need to submit our project for certification of the Department of Health. It, um, it doesn't need to be a hundred percent plans, but pretty darn close to what we're planning to do, um. They will then let us know at the end of June, they'll give us approval of the plans and give us authorization to go to the next steps. Um, so then in July, we would bid an award, and August would be the earliest we could begin construction on each of these projects, so we'd predict. Project, spring work, this is going to be, you know, fifty-some homes that we're trying to, to get through their front yards and into their basements and, and make, make all those fixes, so. It'll take a little bit of while.
So, so you gotta, if you have a basement and your wire's coming in through here, you gotta basically dig out all the dirt and stuff around it to replace the pipe coming in?
That, yeah, that is one of the options, um, there are, there are some trenchless options they could use to, based, we're gonna, for now, assume that they start at the curb stop. At the city's water shut-off.
Right.
And go all the way to the home, um, and redo the connection through the basement, through the foundation, there, there are. Technologies where they can do it trenchlessly, and just open it at, at the end, and they can shoot in under the basement and. Pop in a new, um, connection there, but.
Oh, okay.
Probably the most economical is going to be.
I'm just thinking about my front yard.
Yeah.
Thinking about all those boulders and where your water.
Yeah, it's going to be a very unique project, for sure.
Wow, that's crazy, okay, cool. Alright, my, my page four oh-five, we got a four hundred of the printed, four hundred, okay.
Okay, I make a resolution authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for the lead service line replacement project.
Does she have to say make a motion?
Yeah, well, yeah, so, men, that's basically saying a motion for a resolution, but you're fine, we'll just add that in there.
Didn't I say I make a motion?
You said a resolution.
I thought you did.
Oh, I make a motion.
For a resolution.
For a resolution, authorizing, authorizing, authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for the lead service line replacement project.
Alright, we got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, alright, that pass, thank you. Alright, number twelve, we got comments and reports from council members, councilor, if you.
Um, I attended the quarterly, um, fire commission meeting, and it was just an overview of the Mound Fire Department. And, um, you know, our budget, now the, they've now replaced, I guess, every fireman. As, um, the new uniform with the new protections and a backup one, and so, you know, we're, we're set to. Begin this new partnership, I guess. There's a meeting this week, again, on Thursday. That's all I have.
Alright, I'm going to council member McInnany.
I do not have anything.
Alright, council member Castellano?
Um, nothing, uh, I just wanted to comment on, oh, sorry, I have the outdated agenda, too. Thirteen B, the liquor store report, can we do, um. Like, if you look at, you include the total, like, whereas, if you go to that page where it says gross profit percentage, it's blank, it's usually, tells us what it is. If that can be just like updated going forward. But, um, I don't have any, I don't have any stuff.
Alright, council member Herrick?
Um, nothing thus far, however, we are going to that, um, meeting at the M, or WMDTF, sorry. Don't have that acronym committed yet, um, so we go to that this week. And then I think I also got a notification of the quarterly meeting, so thank you whoever sent that to me, and I think that's really all I have.
Cool.
Um, I only have two things, so yeah, Thursday, we're, it's a drug task force. Anyway, we'll get an update from them, and a lot of times they'll kind of bring back notes from.
Right.
Some of the things that they tell us, and then the other thing is, uh. To save money a couple years ago, uh, we decided to do our own picture, right, in here, so. Our previous councils in the, way in the past were hiring a photographer and that kind of thing, so, um, now that we have a new council member, we got to do a new photo. So, um, I know you're going to be out next week?
Mm-hmm.
Two weeks, sorry, are you?
I'll be here next week for the.
For the joint.
Joint meeting, joint meeting.
Okay.
I will be here the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Okay, so, are you going to?
I'll be around for all of them.
Okay, so, like that March ninth or seventh, whatever, the first, you'll be here?
Mm-hmm, the eleventh.
The first meeting in March? Should we do our photo then?
That's the group photo.
Yeah, basically, we're just going to do it here on a iPhone.
While they're doing it, can we also do new individual headshots, because they're all kind of, some are darker, some of them are bigger and closer up, some are smaller. Be nice to have a consistent.
I was going to bring my camera tonight to offer to take it, because I noticed yours in the newsletter looked like it was cropped out of something.
The other thing, too, is we didn't have your phone number on there for some reason.
I need to get another phone line. I don't want those calls coming in on my personal line, because I use that for work.
Oh, okay.
I don't have, I have a cell phone, that's it, so.
Well, once you get your line, you should have an update on the website at least.
I should have had it by now, but got a little derailed there, so.
Reach you. Okay, so. So let's say before our next meeting, if we want to come maybe a half hour before, is that enough time to do pictures?
Can we just note Kevin and put that in our, do the email notice?
Sorry, March, yeah, March, March eleventh.
That'll have to, since it's a quorum, it'll have to be noticed.
Won't be a worship.
We could do it after. We just do it after.
We could, but we still have to notice it anyway, because it's, the camera's off by then, and. It's up to you guys, whatever you want. I mean, when we first come, it'll be refreshing. By the end, we're exhausted. You guys want to do it before or after?
Whatever.
Doesn't matter.
Whatever anyone else wants.
Okay, you want to do it after?
Whatever works best for them.
What do you want?
Do it before.
Okay, so now I've got before and after.
I don't care.
What did they say?
They didn't care.
All right, I don't really care. Just pick time.
All right, let's just do it after. You want to do it after? Let's do it after.
Well, I mean, it'll take two seconds.
Yeah, we'll do it after.
Yeah, that's good. It'll only take a short.
Okay, so show up at six, and then we'll date the picture after.
Next, they March eleventh?
Yeah.
But prior to that, if anybody wants a new individual picture, I can take it anytime.
Cool.
No.
If you want a picture before that.
You know, a new picture for like the website. Mine is, the lighting is wrong, and mine. Yeah.
So do you want to do one before, or just wait till that night?
I'll do it before.
Okay, so that a hint, do I need a new one?
Well, I think it'd be nice if we were, we're not all in the room, like, I think.
They're all random pictures.
I was in the council meeting, mine's from that, somebody took it, and it's fine, I'm fine with it, because it's in this room. But some look like they're at a beach house, I think yours does. Yeah, yours is cropped out of something.
Cool, okay.
All right.
That's all I got. Do you have anything? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.